Okay, I see by the clock on the wall, it is seven o'clock.
Six.
Pardon me, six o'clock. I haven't gotten oriented in new time. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, March four, 2025 meeting of the Mount Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting. We have swearing in of Planning Commissioner Sherri Wallace by our esteemed Vice City Manager.
Yes, I'm.
Deputy City Manager.
Jesse wasn't able to make it this evening, so I'm gonna swear you in, Sherri. All right, so I'll give that to you. And then you can read after me. So I, Sherri Wallace, solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Planning Commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Planning Commissioner.
Of the city of Mound, Minnesota.
Of the city of Mound, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome to Sherri to the Commission. Roll call, please.
Planning Commission Member Wallace.
Here.
Planning Commission Member Baker.
Here.
Planning Commission Member Heel.
Here.
Planning Commission Member Young.
Here.
Planning Commission Member McInney.
Here.
Chair Good.
Here. Next on the agenda, review and approval of agenda, you will all receive the agenda through me email from Sarah. Are there any comments about the agenda? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to approve as distributed.
Second.
Motion second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Good evening, Sam.
Thank you, sorry for my tardiness.
You're good. Next on the agenda, we have minutes of the Feb. four, 2025 regular meeting of Planning Commission. I assume everybody's had a chance to look them. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Feb. four, twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the February fourth minutes as distributed.
Second.
Do we have a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have the Feb. eighteen, 2025 concurrent special meeting workshop with City Council minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Any suggested changes? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Feb. eighteen, 2025 concurrent special meeting workshop minutes with the City Council.
Motion to approve the February eighteenth concurrent special meeting minutes as distributed.
I'll go ahead, second.
We have a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Board of Adjustment and Appeals, planning case twenty-five dash oh one. Review slash recommendation, Lake Shore setback variance for replacement deck at forty-three sixty-six, Wilshire Boulevard. Gunter is Cheryl Ackerman. Ms. Rita.
Good evening, members of the audience, Planning Commission. I am Rita Trapp with HKGI, the city's planning consultant. I'm actually going to defer to my colleague Mia, who was with you, I think, two months ago. She's gonna take all the planning cases tonight. I'm here to answer questions and help out, but I was just getting things set up for her since she hasn't been here. So I'm gonna just turn everything over to her, she'll walk through the cases and then be available for questions.
We heard just earlier tonight that there's a possibility she might be Vice President tomorrow for the company.
That's news to me.
Okay, Mia, rock and roll.
All right, thank you. The first variance tonight is the Lake Shore setback for a deck replacement at forty-three sixty-six Wilshire Boulevard. It is located on Black Lake, near the intersection of Wilshire Boulevard and Tuxedo Boulevard. It currently has a single-family home with a detached garage on the lot, and the home was built in nineteen sixty. The applicant is proposing to construct a replacement deck that will extend beyond the existing deck into the Lake Shore setback. The applicant is requesting a Lake Shore setback variance of one foot beyond a pre-existing variance that was granted in nineteen ninety-eight of a forty-one-foot setback, so the new setback would be forty feet. Here is the proposed deck. The comprehensive plan guides this lot as low-density residential, and the use will continue to be used as a single-family home. It is zoned in the R-one-A district, single-family residential. It is considered a lot of record, and it is also a Lake Shore lot. There is an existing variance, as I mentioned, for this lot. There is also a permit that was granted in the last year for this lot. The Lake Shore setback variance was approved in nineteen ninety-eight, resolution ninety-eight sixty, and this variance allowed for a forty-one-foot Lake Shore setback for a deck. Then the applicant, that, sorry, excuse me, that variance was for a prior property owner. The current property owner obtained an expansion permit to replace this deck in twenty twenty-four and extend the deck around the corners of the house, maintaining that forty-one-foot setback. However, after obtaining the expansion permit, a sewer pipe was located, discovered to be located running under the proposed deck structure, so the primary deck post can no longer be put in the proposed location for that replacement deck. And the applicant is asking to extend the deck now to ten point six-seven feet from the house, as opposed to the nine point five feet that currently exists, in order to avoid placing the post on the sewer pipe. So in this image, the green line was where the pipe was thought to be located when they originally asked for the expansion permit, and that red line is where the pipe is actually located. And you'll see there's circles on that line where the proposed posts were supposed to be, and the squares just above that red line are where they're proposing to move those deck posts in the next iteration. So the deck would have a proposed setback of forty feet from the Lake Shore. This is a one-foot variance from the forty-one-foot setback that was approved in that original variance application. On the sides, the deck is conforming, it is seven point six feet from the side lot lines. And for this lot, the required setbacks are six feet and four feet for front side yard and rear side yard setbacks. The hardcover for this lot will be thirty-eight point three percent, according to the applicant. This is a slight increase from the thirty-five point four percent that's currently there, although it is still conforming because it is under forty percent, which is the requirement for a lot of record. The deck will increase in area by fifty-five square feet with this change in size, but as you can see, that does not make it non-conforming for hardcover. We received no comments from the public or from staff or agencies during the review period. So I would like to ask you to discuss the request for the variance of a Lake Shore setback for the deck replacement and take one of the following actions. To table the request to ask for more information, recommend approval with the findings of fact and conditions as you see fit, or recommend for denial with findings of facts. Thank you.
Question. So the deck is above, or is it ground-level deck?
It is above.
And that counts towards coverage for the forty percent?
If there's hardcover underneath the deck, like a patio or concrete, which there is in this case, then it does count towards hardcover.
If there is, it does cover. If there's not, it does not cover.
If there's a quarter-inch spacing between the deck, the paneling in the deck, and there's no hardcover underneath it or roof above it, then it does not count towards the impervious surface.
I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions or comments from Mia? Discussion amongst the Commission, anyone have anything they'd like to raise regarding this case?
We're only asking for what, a foot variance? It's that much of a big deal here. They've already got the variance before. Cosmetically, it looks nice. I say we approve it.
Do they wanna speak?
Say again? Yeah, would Ms. Ackerman like to speak to the Commission?
I'm her husband Ray, so.
Mr. Ackerman. Cheryl and I have worked with Sarah on this project, and so, yeah, we just need one foot. We were quite surprised that the sewer, when we purchased the home in twenty twenty, we had it checked in twenty twenty-one and then again in twenty twenty-three, and they both had marked on the patio under the deck where it was located, and it was inside the current posts. So working with Sarah, we used the existing lakeside setback, but I was a little concerned if we went back to that. There's a corner post on the far east side that I thought, I better double-check that because it could be in the way, and I wanna make sure as a homeowner that we don't damage the sewer pipe. Come to find out, we used a local company to do it one last time in early December when the weather was nice. He came out, Jeff Anderson, works at SOS Drain and Service right here, he lives right on Phelps Island. He said, I don't know why they marked it where they did, but this is it. And then I said, can you show me again? I need to, and he showed me, and I says, oh my goodness. So that's when I sent Sarah an email going, well, we just got this deck approved, we're excited to get started this spring, and we have a problem. So the only solution to just kinda continue with the same look and feel of it is just, can we just go out a little further, which is right at the edge of the patio? And it will be a nice-looking one, and this deck is very old, it's from nineteen ninety-eight, and it needs to be replaced. Yeah, we don't use it, it's not safe.
We hear you.
Yeah, so that's what we got, yeah.
Questions or comments from Mr. Ackerman? Hearing none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if you look on page eleven of the agenda packet that you were sent by Sarah, you'll note that staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council that this request be approved with four conditions and three findings of fact.
So I will make a motion to approve planning case twenty-five zero one with conditions one through four and findings of facts one through three on page eleven.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Go ahead, second.
We have a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Ackerman. Let's move on to planning case number twenty-five oh two, review slash recommendation, lot size variance for new single-family home at twenty-nine fourteen Meadow Lane, applicant is Christian Brooks. Ms. Mia, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good luck with the debt.
Thank you.
All right. So for the twenty-nine fourteen Meadow Lane variance, the property is located on Meadow Lane near Highland Park. It is currently a vacant lot, although there was a single-family home previously on that lot that was torn down in two thousand eight. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story slab-on-grade, one thousand five hundred sixty-six-square-foot single-family home with an attached two-car garage. The existing lot size is four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet, and the minimum lot size required for a single-family dwelling on this lot is six thousand square feet. So the applicant is requesting a lot size variance in order to construct on this lot. The comprehensive plan guides this lot as low-density residential, which allows for single-family detached and attached housing types, and the proposed use for this lot is single-family home. It is zoned in the R-two, two-family residential district, and it is considered a lot of record. The requirements for an R-two lot of record, single-family home, is a lot of six thousand square feet with a width of forty feet and a depth of eighty feet. The setbacks are front yard twenty feet, rear yard fifteen feet, and the side yard is six feet on each side. The proposed single-family dwelling would be on a lot that's four thousand three hundred fifty-six square feet. The street frontage is conforming, forty feet is required, and this lot has forty-four point three-six feet on a public frontage. And the lot depth is also conforming, the requirement is eighty feet, and this lot is ninety-two point zero eight feet deep. The setbacks that the applicant is proposing are also conforming with the R-two district. The front yard setback that they are proposing is twenty feet, which is the minimum required. The rear yard is fifteen feet, also meeting the requirement, and the side yard is eight feet on the north side and eight point five feet on the south side, which are both above the six-foot requirement. The applicant is proposing hardcover of thirty-eight percent. The code allows for forty percent for a lot of record, so this is conforming, and the final hardcover will be confirmed during the building permit process if it gets there. No comments were received from the public or agencies during review. And so we would like to ask for your discussion and to table, recommend, or deny this request.
Okay. Questions or comments from Mia?
Do we run into this very often where the lot is that much smaller than the required six thousand? We see this from time to time, primarily it's been a vacant lot that's never had a house on it. And I can think of a couple of them, one was out in Three Points, one was out in the Chateau neighborhood where we recognized the existing lot size. The most important, I think, piece of information is that you can demonstrate that you can put a conforming house on it. As Mia said, this house, this lot actually had a house on it previously, so it was developed, but the house was removed in two thousand and eight, and because of the significant amount of time that has elapsed, it was the evaluation of the city attorney that we process a variance because one didn't exist. If this lot was, had a house on it, goes out tomorrow, they could rebuild on it, it's just that there's such a substantial amount of time. From time to time, we see them, not a lot. Well, I know right where that is, and I remember watching them tear it down. Yep, in two thousand and eight. And the proposed home looks, it's gonna really add some ambiance to that little street and neighborhood.
Okay, further comments?
I think it looks good, they're conforming to all the other setbacks. They're not even, they're even leaving more room on the sides than they have to, and they're not stretching it out to forty percent hardcover, which is nice. I think it fits in well.
Yeah.
I agree. Further comments? Okay, thank you, Rita, Mia, pardon me. Is Christian here? Would you like to address the Commission?
Sure.
We'd like your name and address, please, that's our standard format.
Sure, my name is Christian Brooks, this is my wife Isabel. Our current address is actually in Eden Prairie, nine five four nine Yorkshire Lane, Eden Prairie, Minnesota. I'm actually from the city of Mound, though, and I have family around here. So we're kinda looking to move closer to Mound and improve the neighborhood as well. Like you guys said, it's pretty simple, we're gonna meet all setback requirements, ground coverage. The only thing is, the lot's a little bit smaller than it's supposed to be, so we're just looking for a variance.
Go ahead.
Question, this is a primary residence, are you planning to rent this?
This will be a primary residence.
Okay.
Yes, as of now, yeah.
What are you gonna do during tornado season?
Tornado season.
You got no basement?
No basement, there is a room between the garage and the kitchen, it's the mudroom. So that doesn't have any kind of window exposure, so it should be pretty safe.
I just had, with respect, two questions. This may or may not represent the final house plan, right?
This is our ideal plan.
This is kind of your ideal plan.
This is our ideal plan, yes.
But there could be some nuances, as long as it's, I just wanted to be formal that as long as it's a single-family home and it's meeting the code requirement.
Yes, yeah, this is our preliminary plan. Only changes would most likely not be exterior, it would be within the house. So I don't know if you guys have sets of the plans, I can hand them out. We would just be moving a couple walls, maybe, so.
And I would just also ask, we did notify everyone in the neighborhood, so there could be people here. Just maybe see if anybody had any questions from the, from the audience.
Yeah.
Okay, questions or comments for Christian or Isabel? Hearing none, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have individuals in the audience that want to address the Commission about this application? Seeing none. If you review page thirty-two of your agenda, you will note that staff is recommending that the Commission recommend to the City Council approval of this application with, on page thirty-three, six conditions and four findings of fact. Further discussion amongst the Commission? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the lot size variance for planning case twenty-five oh two, citing the conditions one through six and findings of facts one through four, as written on page thirty-three.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you, folks, good luck on your house.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, sure. Planning case twenty-five oh three. Review slash recommendation, front setback variance for front entryway addition for replacement home at forty-six oh nine Tuxedo Boulevard. Applicant Greg Jeska of CJ Homes, on behalf of owner Mike Sobadi. Mia.
Thank you. The variance for forty-six oh nine Tuxedo Boulevard is on a property located near the intersection of Drury Lane and Tuxedo Boulevard. It is currently a single-family dwelling with a detached garage, and the house was built in nineteen seventy-four. The applicant is requesting, as part of a house reconstruction project due to fire damage, to add an entryway to the front of the house. The proposed setback for the entryway addition is twenty-two point three feet, so the applicant is requesting a variance of seven point seven feet from the thirty-foot front yard setback. The image shows the house today, and then the bottom image is the proposed front entryway addition. The lot is guided as low-density residential in the comprehensive plan, and it will continue being used as a single-family home. It is zoned R-one, single-family housing, it is a lot of record, so the setback requirement for the front yard is thirty feet. The replacement structure is in the same footprint as the original house, which is deemed non-conforming. The existing house and the replacement has a setback of twenty-six point seven feet, and the blue is where the existing footprint is of that house. The proposed setback for the entryway is twenty-two point three feet. The entryway addition is shown in red on the screen, so they are asking for a variance of seven point seven feet. The maximum allowance for hardcover on a lot of record is forty percent. Currently, the hardcover is non-conforming, it is forty-nine point three percent. As part of this larger reconstruction, the proposed hardcover is being reduced to forty-eight point eight percent, which is a slight reduction in that existing non-conformity. No comments were received during the public and agency review period. So I would like to ask you to discuss this variance request and to take one of the following actions. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Mia? Hearing none, discussion amongst the Commission.
So I guess I got a question for Sarah. The lot size is so irregular with that little zig out of there, do we know why it is like that?
I don't, maybe the property owner or the contractor, it just, it notes an exception for some reason.
Yeah.
Because if that wasn't, if that little notch wasn't, if that wasn't in place, the house would probably be conforming.
Correct.
So in all intents and purposes, it looks like it's far enough away.
If you drive by, it looks like it's conforming.
Yeah, right, I don't have that history.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay, is Mr. Jeska here?
Yes.
Would you like to address the Commission?
I don't really have anything, because I don't know why that's jotted like that.
Okay. Well, editorially, I can tell the Commission that as an owner of a house without an entryway, that's a big disadvantage in our climate. Okay, further discussion?
Like I said, when I drive by, it doesn't look like it's non-conforming, and I don't think this would change that. And I think architecture makes it look a little nicer than just a flat front house.
True. Okay.
Is there anybody here?
Further discussion or comments? Anybody in the audience want to address the Commission?
Just seeing the house up there kinda triggers, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing no further discussion. On page forty-six of your agenda, you see that staff has recommended that the Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the applicant's request with four conditions and three findings of fact. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve planning case twenty-five oh three, front setback variance, including conditions one through four and finding of fact one through three on page forty-six and forty-seven.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead, second.
We have a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, folks, for coming forward, thank you, Mia, for those presentations.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
Yeah.
Nicely done.
All right, moving on. Now that we've been enlightened. Review and discussion regarding the twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission work plan and staff project list on the very last page of your packet.
Good evening, members of the Commission, I'm Sarah Smith, the Development Director. In your packet is the list of Planning Commission and staff projects that were talked about at our concurrent special meeting workshop with the Council on the eighteenth. And so before you is that list of items for both your, for the Commission and for staff. And as is normal and customary, we bring that back so that everybody can kinda take a look at what was talked about and what's on the list, and then we forward that list with the Planning Commission's review and recommendation up to the Council. the Planning Commission's review and recommendation up to the council so it's formal, because that was a special meeting workshop. As you know, we had a laundry list of things that were talked about, some of which came to the Planning Commission, some activities the council is going to include on their list, and other activities are going to be on the staff list. So the list of items that's within the Planning Commission purview is included in the packet includes such things as taking some looks again at the zoning ordinance for a number of topics. ADA parking was brought up as part of West Tonka Library, updating the residential use standards to include required updating revisions, those types of things. We're going to be looking at yards and all kinds of things. Additionally, taking a look at front yard parking and exterior storage. I think that was one of the commonly discussed items. I know the Planning Commission took a look at it a couple years ago, and then there was some changes made, and I think Planning Commission and council felt as a group that it's time to take another look at that. And so that's within the purview of the Planning Commission. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that members of the commission may have.
I would suggest that we extend the front yard exterior storage regulations to side yards, because if you look at a lot of houses, stuff is parked at the side of the house in addition to the front of the house, so we might want to include that.
Exterior storage. Sure.
All right. Further discussion about the issues that Sarah raised that are on your page 63?
I have another one, too. Didn't we also talk about looking at side yard setbacks on like major roads?
We did talk about that.
Yeah. I think we, we'll add that, but I think.
It's kind of in the yard section, but I think that it's good to call it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm glad that you said that, because the yard thing is complicated. So thank you for the reminder.
I think that'll be a lot easier than yard storage.
Yeah, no kidding.
What about the discussion on the number of people on the committee changing the work rules for that?
I think the council's going to be delving into that.
Number one. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think we're, as attrition happens, we'll bring it down to seven.
But I thought we were talking about leaving it, taking it off, or not filling the seat right now, and we'd have to change our work rules to accommodate that, I thought.
Well, we're going to discuss it further. I think the council needs to talk about it first, and then.
Oh, and then once they do it, then we change the work rules?
Then we would do that, because we're looking at the work rules anyway, because that's going to be kind of an overhaul. So I think that's kind of the thought of when we would incorporate it in. But I think the council needs to do their work first, and then we'll follow. That would be my thought, anyway.
Okay. Further comments? Okay. Then we have the 2025 staff list. Want to comment on those? Sarah?
Yeah. There's a couple of things on there. One is that we'll be working with, I think, Safebuilt on the International Property Maintenance Code. We will also be working on starting our forward motion on the Imagine 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and in addition to work rules that we'll be working on in cooperation with members of the Planning Commission as well. What else is on that list?
I don't have any, but I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How come that's due so far out? We're talking about 2020, did the 2040?
Yeah, you can talk about it.
So the way that comprehensive planning works is every 10 years, the Metropolitan Council has to go through a specific process.
Process in law.
And they, as part of that process, generally in this year will be the year in September-ish, they will release what's called a system statement. And the way that the law works is that three years after the release of that system statement, the city is required to have their comprehensive plan in place. So they give you time, so they, they'll, most likely, they will distribute it on September 30th, and then the city will have till December 31st of 2028 to finish their comprehensive plan update. And just as a reminder, there's like more than 180 jurisdictions that simultaneously have to update their comprehensive plans, and everybody has to ask each other for all of these things. So that three-year timeline wall seems like a long way away.
It goes quick.
For those of us in the planning world, it's a very tight and busy timeframe trying to work through all of those different jurisdictions. So it's, what they do is they start with the census information, and when the census information comes out, then they start their review of demographics. Then they do the system-wide planning, and that takes a few years, and then they issue. So there's a very systematic process they go through every 10 years, and we're just at the end of that cycle. So we don't have to necessarily act this year on anything, but it is nice to get it in queue and kind of figure out what our process is going to be. Typically, they take from nine months to 18 months, depending on the city's complexity, because you do have to send it all out to all the adjacent jurisdictions for them to provide comment on, and it just, the process takes a while to go through. So did that help, or did I say more than you really wanted to know? Sorry.
It just seems weird that you'd be in 2028 doing the 2050 plan. You haven't even got to 2030, 2040.
Well, the plans all look 20 years out.
Okay.
So we finished the 2040 in, actually, we figured, finished on time. Not everybody does.
We did, yeah.
But we finished on time in 20, so what, 2018 for 2040, and so now, 10 years later, we're looking at the next one.
It's been six years since we did that?
It would have been in 2018.
Yeah. And then we did a pretty, we did an amendment in 2022, no, 23, when we went on moratorium when we changed the mixed use. So we took about.
It goes fast.
It does go fast.
Yeah. This will be my third round of comprehensive plans. It goes fast in between each cycle, and usually, actually, for us, the cycle takes five years to complete, just with all the cities that hang on at the end, trying to finish everything, so.
But the good news is we can amend them.
Oh, for sure.
And we did.
Yeah.
Yep. Most cities will amend their comprehensive plans in between times. It's just the complexity of that amendment. So. But we, that's just making sure that it's on everybody's radar, because budgeting and trying to make sure that we have that figured out and what process and how in-depth the update needs to be. Right now, we're still waiting for the information from the Metropolitan Council about what elements are the focus and what is new and what is going to have to change. We know we will have to change some things, and so we need to better assess that before we can identify the process and the cost, because they have new requirements, and they are changing density requirements and doing different changes that we will have to address as part of the process. But really, the focus is on what you want, but we will try and check the boxes at the same time.
Okay. Do we have to take any formal action on this stuff?
We normally do a motion and a second and a vote, so that, and then we include it on the council agenda so that we have an approved work plan. So yes, that would be in order with your permission.
Okay. So Chair would entertain a motion to.
Put those changes.
Approve the 2025 Planning Commission work plan as presented.
So I'll make a motion to approve the recommended 2025 Planning Commission work plan with the addition of the side yard setbacks on major roads and the 2025 staff list.
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Kath, any comments from you?
This morning, Jesse and Mayor Holt went up to the Capitol and spoke in front of the Capitol Investment Committee meeting. Representative Myers invited them to this. He's introducing a bill, and it went well. He, Jay, Mayor Holt took up all five minutes of his allotted speaking time, and he was heard. And, you know, Andrew Myers has really been a great proponent for us for this, so all we can do is keep, you know, oiling the tugs and the wheel and hope this, we get more money. We didn't get any last year, as you know, but we got the $10 million in 2023. Are you talking about the water treatment? Yeah, for the water treatment plant. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Kath. Sarah, staff project update?
Staff project update.
Flash report.
Yes. I don't, I don't have too much. We're busy. Construction season is busy. Road restrictions went on yesterday. We followed the state of Minnesota, and so now they'll stay in place until sometime in generally early May. We are busy still with permitting. It's always amazing. You know, we've got some folks that are starting projects. Some are in the middle of projects. Some are working on projects, and so the phones still keep ringing. We, Rita and I are working on the, our city clerk updated the zoning ordinance to get all the ordinances from 2024 into the actual document. And, you know, we've got cannabis with solar, with mixed use, with electric vehicle chargers, and with ADUs. And so we spent some time today making sure that all of those are in the, are in the actual official copy, and we had some small changes, and we'll work with Kevin to get those made. Other things that are happening, we'll start working on taking an in-depth look at the Planning Commission work rules and start working on that. It's busy. Special events are busy. Again, it hasn't slowed down for winter, and I guess, it was spring, but I think tonight's winter again, so we'll see. Other than that, it's all good. Thank you for asking.
I'm still waiting for that reservation to that upscale.
Yeah.
The Collins Place. Any comments on that?
I don't have any new information for you, Chair.
Okay. Next meeting, April 1 at 6:00 PM. Does anyone on the commission have anything else to bring up tonight? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion to adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Welcome, Sheri.
Thank you.
You have an easy one.
Yes.
And that one's fast.
Thanks, everyone.